Let's call the meeting to order. Call the roll, please.
Bolt.
Here.
Gill.
Here.
Harrod.
Here.
Finley.
Here.
Rutherford.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
Foster.
Here.
Thank you. Would you please rise and join me in the Lord's Prayer? Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Our kingdom come; thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. Lead us not to temptation, but deliver us from evil; for thine is the kingdom, power, and glory forever. Amen. And flax it, please. Attention, position, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Item one, citizens' participation. This is that time during the program where you are allowed to talk to us if you would like to. We have a three-minute per person limit and a 12-minute per topic limit. If you would like to say something to us, come up, tell us who you are, sign in, and give us the information so we can get ahold of you and speak your piece.
Oh. You're old.
We've missed you.
I know, right? Oops. Turn the pen off. Write this down. I just want to comment just very quickly. Thank you all so very much for offering the ability for the listening panel this week, Wednesday evening, and really opening this up for a discussion for all citizens to be a part of the process. I think that's really important, and I really appreciate you all doing this for our community and being willing to be open and to listen. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you, Holly.
I'm Glenn Keegan. Would thank you, mayor and council, for allowing us to talk. Name signed in here. Would like to talk about the bike lanes just a little bit, some concerns. We do live on Broadway, so we would like to, I would like to address that subject. I know the bike lane's been brought up probably for beautification on Broadway, but as a citizen on Broadway, there's going to be a lot of traffic on Broadway. We like Broadway the way it is, open and free, like the trees, and we feel like we take space away from Broadway each side. My understanding is about 10 foot on each side, that it will take up part of the street. At that particular time, there'd be no street parking. Also, we, you know, we, there's a lot of people that have short driveways on Broadway and need the street parking. If they don't park it on the street, they might be parking on the sidewalk, which is probably also illegal to park on the sidewalk. Don't know that, but probably so to interfere with people walking on the sidewalk. So, anyway, wanted to address some of those concerns. You know, we have plumbers, you know, people like that, like we have people that spray our house. They pull up in a trailer, they pull up in the, what would be the bike lanes, and that would not, I don't know where they would pull up to spray, spray your stuff. You know, and the other thing is safety concerns. I mean, we all back out. We don't, we have a fairly short driveway, pull in, we back out. Hard enough to see cars backing in and out. So, I think it'd be a safety issue as far as, you know, bikers, having to watch for bikers. You know, I've actually hit a, hit a person on a bike before, and it's a scary thing. So, you know, the other thing is just, you know, handicap parking, people have events. I mean, we just had Thanksgiving, people parked on the street. Where are they going to park Thanksgiving? You know, those types of things. So, you know, and I, I mean, you know, my concern is, is that, you know, I don't know, you know, if there's that many bikers in Shawnee or not. I haven't seen a lot of bikers in Shawnee as far as, you know, truly bikers, not, not the ones on small bikes. But, you know, we've, we have a, you know, a concern about, you know, we spend, I don't know how much money the project spends, but spend a lot of money and, and on something that I think the residents of Broadway are opposed to. So, anyway, just wanted to speak for the residents of Broadway. I understand there's a meeting in a couple nights that there'll probably be more participation at, but just wanted to take that time and speak to you about that and just the changes on Broadway.
Okay. Thank you, Glenn.
Thank you.
Just following protocol, I said stand up. I just saw that you knocked, so I'm going to.
My name's Randy James. I also live on Broadway. Thank you for the council members and mayor that showed up to our meeting on Saturday, our listening session. We had a question that was asked of us from a Rhonda or Robin, and says, "We've looked on, looked on Shawnee.org, Blue Zone website, Facebook, Avedis website, Facebook, and have found mission statements of various posts. Is there a place we, the residents of Shawnee, can go to see a clear outline of the larger proposals for the city that will impact our neighborhood streets before they have been approved, other than reading minutes of every council meeting? If not, can a place be created?" I mean, I don't know. I mean, I guess we're wanting to look out in the future rather than, you know, as it is right now.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, is there anything out there?
We're not allowed to respond during this part of the program.
Oh, that's right. And I agree with the gentleman here, that, you know, it's like if service vehicles, trucks and trailers, people who come cut the grass, they're, if they're allowed to park in the, in the bike path, you know, but residents cannot, then I think that's basically a slap in the face. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, one last thing. I guess we're the face of this opposition for the bike lanes, my wife and I, that's what we've been told. Two people started all this, is what we've been told.
(laughing).
You know, versus how many committees? You know, 50 people on a committee. You know, you start getting the ball rolling, more and more people starting to show up.
Anyone else? Okay. Thank you all. Item two, is there any item on the consent agenda that any of the commissioners would prefer to pull? I've seen none would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
By Commissioner Bolt, second by Commissioner Gillum. Call the question. Motion carries seven zero. Item three, animal control.
I'm Officer Lovers with Animal Welfare. This is Anna. She's a little terrier mix, just a few months old. She's available for adoption up at the shelter.
Good-looking dog. Thank you. Item four, discussion consideration of an ordinance amending the employee retirement system defined benefit plan for the city of Shawnee, Oklahoma by adopting a revised and restated retirement plan providing retirement benefits for eligible employees of the city of Shawnee, Oklahoma, providing for purpose and organization, providing for definitions, providing for eligibility and participation, providing for non-alienation of benefits, providing for employer and employee contributions, providing for accounting allocation and valuation, providing benefits, providing for required notice, providing for amendments and termination, providing for transfer to and from other plans, creating a retirement committee, and providing for powers, duties, and rights of retirement committee, providing for payment of certain obligations, providing for duration and payment schedules, payment of expenses, providing for effective date, providing for vesting schedules, providing for a fund to finance the system to be pooled with other incorporated cities, towns, and their agencies and instrumentalities for purposes of administration, management, and investment as part of the Oklahoma Municipal Retirement Fund, providing for payment of all contributions under the system to the Oklahoma Municipal Retirement Fund for management and investment, providing for repealer and severability, adopting those amendments mandated by the Internal Revenue Code and declaring an emergency. Are there any questions? (laughing). I can probably tell you more about this than she can. The IRS issues amended regulations and rules all the time, and instead of requiring you to amend the plan every time they do it, they set a timeframe, and they say you can go, and I think it's over five years, is it not?
So, at the end, so sometime at the end of this five-year period, you've got to adopt
a restated plan, which is a new plan which incorporates all the amendments that the Internal Revenue Service has issued, whether it be through regulation, statute, or amendment or ruling during that period. So, if you have anything to add to that, feel free.
If anybody had any questions.
Basically, we have no choice.
We have, yeah, we have a choice. We can withdraw from the Oklahoma Municipal Retirement Fund and run our own plan, which would then have to be a non-qualified plan because we couldn't meet the IRS regulations. So, basically, we have no choice.
We only have about 20 people on this plan, so.
Yeah, I don't know that some of the new commissioners, years ago, and I don't know how many.
2013.
The, the city, they didn't terminate, but they grandfathered their defined benefit, which is a pension plan, as opposed to a defined contribution plan. And so, the newer employees are under a defined contribution plan. The old employees are under this, what you would think of as a traditional pension plan.
Well, we did that because we had a unfunded balance. We're talking to the auditors of, in the program, so we had to come back and try to solve that problem, is to get that equaled out, so that's why we changed the plan.
Almost all plans on a universal basis are going to defined contribution plan.
Okay. Any other questions?
I may approve.
Moved by Commissioner Harrod to approve. Second by Commissioner Gillum, if I hear that right. Is there any further discussion?
Do I have to read some?
You're going to have to read all, no, we've got a motion in a second, so you can get to read all that again.
Yeah, I hope you guys like it second time. An ordinance amending the employee retirement system defined benefit plan for the city of Shawnee, Oklahoma by adopting a revised and restated retirement plan, providing retirement benefits for eligible employees of the city of Shawnee, Oklahoma, providing for purpose and organization, providing for definitions, providing for eligibility and participation, providing for non-alienation of benefits, providing for employer and employee contributions, providing for accounting, allocation, and valuation, providing benefits, providing for required notice, providing for amendments and termination, providing for transfer to and from other plans, creating a retirement committee, and providing for powers, duties, rights of retirement committee, providing for payment of certain obligations, providing for duration and payment of expenses, providing for effective date, providing for vesting schedules, providing for a fund to finance the system to be pooled with other incorporated cities, towns, and their agencies and instrumentalities for purposes of administration, management, and investment as part of the Oklahoma Municipal Retirement Fund, providing for payment of all contributions under the system to the Oklahoma Municipal Retirement Fund for management and investment, providing for repealer and severability, adopting those amendments mandated by the Internal Revenue Code and declaring an emergency.
Call the question. Motion carries seven zero. Is there a motion to adopt the emergency clause?
So moved.
By Commissioner Harrod, who seconded. Commissioner Gillum.
I would mention that Shawnee was one of the original cities that was in the retirement program and helped develop this, so it's been a longstanding program for us.
It's, it's been a really good program. Call the question. Motion carries seven zero. Item five, consider bids, Johnson.
Mayor and commissioners, the first item is the library flooring project. We bid that out on the 21st October. We did have a pre-bid meeting, it was a mandatory pre-bid meeting there with the contractors to make sure that they understood what they were bidding on, and then November 18th, we opened those bids here in this meeting. I have visited with the bidders that bid on that floor, and staff is recommending that we award to Brian's Flooring at Oklahoma City for the base bid of $92,600 with some additional costs, depending on the moisture content. They're required to do a moisture test on that floor, and we put that in there because in the past, some of the flooring projects we've had over there, and the way they've put some of the carpet down has indicated that there could be a moisture problem, or was at that time. So, we just want to ensure that the way that the flooring's put down, it's going to last. So, there's, there's three, three could be additional costs. It'll only be one of these, it won't be all three. The first one's up to 93% moisture, there's a 25 cent per square foot, and this, these are dictating how or what product they use to put this down with, whether it's a glue, roll-on, a spray. 94% to 95% moisture would be 2 and 1/2 cents per square foot more, and if it's over 95% moisture, it'll be 4 and 1/2 cents per square foot more, just because of the way they had to put that floor down. And this will be funded out of the half-cent temporary sales tax. Any questions?
Is it possible that the moisture content is going to be zero so that we won't pay the 25 cents? Because it sounds to me like if it's up to 93%.
Right. It could, it could be, I don't think it'll be zero.
Yeah.
So, it'll probably be 25 cents per square foot.
So, we're going to, we're going to be out of pocket, the additional 25, 25 cents. It's just a matter of whether we're going to get the other 2 and 1/2 or 4 and 1/2.
Right.
Any other questions? There a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Bolt, who seconded. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Seehole. Call the question.
Can I have a clarification on the motion?
The motion is to, is to approve Brian's flooring with the conditions that he set forth, with the add-ons.
That's the floor I want to make sure.
Call the question. Motion carries seven zero. Senior citizens' center.
All right. On the senior senate roof, when I turned this paperwork in, I thought that I was ready to bid or to award this project. Due to some conversations I had today with, with the contractors, again, I feel there may have been a misunderstanding between some of our discussions. So, I would like to, to just defer this to a meeting at a later date to give me a chance to make sure that, that we have this correct before we award it.
You want to defer it to the next meeting, or do you want to defer it?
To a meeting at a later date.
To a future meeting.
To a future meeting, just so, I don't want to rush myself in making this decision.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Harrod.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Rutherford. Call the question. Motion carries seven zero. Administrative reports, Don.
Good evening, mayor and commissioners. Don Lynch, Emergency Management Director. I'm pleased to be up here to give you a brief update on where we stand with the restoration of the Mass Notification System for our city. We have the contract with the vendor, and it's been set up for some time. He's been working with our GIS person, who left and went on to work with the county, but she has continued to help us and will continue to help us with this project. We had to provide basically two types of data, and the first is a map of all the city's streets, is in digital form, and that includes the street name and whether it's, you know, we have streets, boulevards, places, all kinds of different suffixes to the, the name of the roads. So, those have to be correct, and each one of those has to be in a separate file, along with the range of addresses that can be on that street, so starting from one block to the end of that street. What is, what is the range of addresses, and what are the addresses that are assigned on each one, each side of that street? And then, the second type of data that we provide is the 911 database, which includes all of the landline phones are in Shawnee. Those will be put in immediately. That data has, is a first version of that data, with more to come, has been sent to the vendor. They received it on Friday. They'll be inputting that this week and getting back with us on additional GIS requirements. Once that gets turned on and we get, start on that, that uploaded data, then everything that, that is done is coded by that, that address in there. So, basically, we have to have all that correct information in there, otherwise people may miss calls, people may get calls that is not intended for them. So, it's really important that we get solid data, and we've been working on that process and kind of at the mercy of, of the GIS person to work through that in addition to all the other projects that they've been working on. So, we have a good start on that, and I feel like we'll be pretty close to, to done with that very shortly, maybe by the end of this week with that part of it. And then, once that's turned on and the 911 data is incorporated, so we have all the landline data in the system, then we'll be able to advertise, and we will plan on advertising both city website and the paper and through our, our local media and through social media for people to go out and add their additional contact information they want. So, if they want an email, if they want a cellphone, if they want a relative who needs to know when, you know, the property is affected here in town, they can add those in, and the company will provide the portal where people can go online and add that data. Now, if someone does not have address to do that online, they can contact our office, and we'll get that data from them and put that up there, so that will be available. And that will all be explained in our media campaigns, we put that out there for those people to be able to access that. So, I really think that we'll be able to get that fully turned on pretty quickly. Again, just waiting on making sure that all the data in the database is correct. Why that's so important is, number one, the weather warnings that, that we issue that by are automatically fed from the National Weather Service to the vendor. They have a system where the vendor pays to receive that data automatically, basically the same time that we get it over the weather radio and downstairs over the systems that we have in the Emergency Operations Center. The vendor is getting that, and the Weather Service issues warnings by a polygon. That is, they draw a line around where that storm is headed, and so wide and so long, basically an hour down the road, and they issue those warnings on that polygon. So, the data has to be correct, knowing that your address is either in that polygon or out of that polygon. So, if it's in it, that way you'll get the warning. If it's out, they won't bother you waking you up at 3:00 a.m. to tell you that you're not in a warning, basically, for that. So, that's why it's taken quite a bit of time to make sure that we get this right, so that the system does work properly. So, I just wanted to let you know that we are making good progress on that and are expecting to have that turned on fully very quickly. And the good thing about this, in addition to being able to go in and add data, you can always add data or change data any time. So, if you want the information for just tornado warnings, you're going to get that automatically, but if you want other products like fire weather warnings or thunderstorm warnings or whatever, you can choose those on the portal. And so, it kind of lets you customize the warnings you want. If you change your phone number, change your cellphone number, change an email address or whatever, you can go in and update that real quickly, and it's done right then. So, I think that's been important for us. The add-on part after that's turned on and up and running is we're going to be working with our department heads, primarily the emergency services, but also the municipal authority and others, to be able to issue polygons for information that they need to get out to the public. For instance, if we're going to be turning off the water in your neighborhood, the people at Public Works can go in, pull up the map, draw the polygon, and say, "We have a water main break, crews are working on it, we estimate the water's going to be off for two hours." Boom, it sends it out to everybody in that polygon. So, that will be a good benefit for us to be able to communicate with our citizens as well. We didn't get that fully implemented before, but we'll have that now, and that'll, that'll be a great thing for that to occur. So, that's briefly where we are in getting that updated and turned on. Be happy to answer any questions you might have for me.
In terms of future support, is that going to come from you all internally or with a vendor?
Both. We will continue to always be available to receive data and input that for people who don't have access to the system, to, to input their data for the extra numbers that they want. That's what we'll do. But the vendor will, will, will continue to maintain and update that and make sure that it's state-of-the-art always. And then, we plan on working with the GIS people, because those numbers change too, to add, you know, quarterly or probably not monthly, but quarterly updates, so that we'll, we'll send the latest data up to them by thumb drive and they can load it, or we can do it by portal.
I understand how you all would know if we extended a street, but how would you know if somebody puts in a new landline?
Yeah.
How physically do you?
That comes into the 911 database. Landlines are put into that, and we'll send them the files to update.
So, AT&amp;T or whoever the phone vendor does that, sends that to you or to?
That's correct. Correct.
Other questions?
Let's answer a lot of questions as far as communications with the public, and not only the knowledge, but the ability to get it out there, and that's, that's really a good, excellent thing.
It will be of good benefit, I think, between the city and our system.
More robust system that we'll have.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Yeah, no comparison.
Technology has improved dramatically, and it's to our benefit to be able to access that. So, it was a good thing.
Thank you, Don.
Thank you.
Director of Operations Shawnee Beautification Committee.
Coming around is an award. I just wanted y'all to be able to see this. A little over a week ago, up at the Keep Oklahoma Beautiful banquet, the Shawnee Community Beautification Committee had submitted an entry to that. We became a finalist, and we did win out of our category, which was 15,000 to 40,000 population nonprofit.
That's pretty cool.
And the submittal for that was, was some of the work that the beautification committee does downtown with the clock over on Bell, the post office, Main Street, along with our part-time beautification person that we have. So, we have a, a good group of volunteers that like to do that, and they're good at it, and I just wanted y'all to have a chance to, to see that award.
We appreciate it, and appreciate the good work and, and to the committee, and I know Tom Terry specifically works all day, every day doing this, so. Is there any new business?
No, sir.
Commissioners' comments?
Starting this in?
Sure.
I guess I better mention, Christmas parade is Thursday. Weather's supposed to be great, so I'd expect to see a lot of folks down on Main Street, I would think. Should be a good night in Shawnee. Also, I want to thank all my neighbors that came out tonight. Appreciate you guys getting involved regardless of how you feel on either side of an issue. I think it's great that people come and talk to us. There's been a lot of bad information floating around town, and I would really stress that, you know, the quickest way to get to the bottom of it is contact one of the seven of us sitting right up here. We're always glad to, to talk with you. So, but thanks for coming tonight, and hopefully have a big turnout on Wednesday.
I heard a story one time about compassion where it's where an old man plants a tree whose shade he will never experience. I don't know if it's a man and not a woman necessarily, except he typically outlives somewhat, but I guess the question right now is, is he planting that tree on someone's parking space?
I, I, Ron and, and the mayor and I attended the meeting Saturday. I might kind of explain that the only reason there's three commissioners there is because if you have four, then you have a quorum, and that's, breaks the open meeting law without it being called. So, that's, I should, Sean, see if anybody else showed up that I'd leave so that somebody else could participate, but that didn't happen. But I do want to thank Daniel for hosting that and Reverend Belford and for opening up the church, and also for Rachel for being there to provide information as the questions came up. I want to remind everyone that Wednesday night is the 4th, that we're having an open meeting here, and I've been working with the city manager, and hopefully the staff will be here to answer questions about the, the progress on, on Broadway so that we can, we can move, you know, move along with, on that. So, I do invite everybody to come out and hopefully a bigger exchange between the commission and, and the people. To answer the other question, I don't know whether any kind of conceptual drawings of that are available or not. I don't remember seeing any, there may be, but I don't recall seeing any, so I don't know that there's any available. And I might, could be not, my memory's not as good as it should be, so I could be wrong about that, but it's my understanding. So, maybe we'll have additional information there Wednesday night if there is any information about what the concept is on it. So, thank you very much for your interest. Thank you for your interest Saturday, and I appreciate your attendance.
Looking forward to Thursday night, to the parade. Do you, number of entries, pretty substantial like in the past?
We're sitting at 85 right now.
We're sitting at 85 right now.
That's gonna be...
We'll be pushing 100. By the time we, the ones that don't get kind of like sponsors and all the city vehicles and all that kind of stuff, we'll be sitting around 100.
Gonna be another, another good one.
It will be.
Thank you guys for doing that, Seth, for doing that. And looking forward to Wednesday night, to all the participation that I feel like we're gonna get, that's, that's good, everyone's getting out and having these discussions. And shop local for Christmas.
I think Wednesday night's gonna be good information for both sides of this. You know, the nothing has really, decisions have not been made, so I think it's kind of eye-opener for everybody up here on how heated that this topic has gotten. So anyway, I think Wednesday will be a good time for everybody to kind of voice what's going on. Definitely shop Shawnee, I think that's a big factor that we all need to remember. And Thursday night will be a good turnout, I think. Weather looks halfway decent, so looks like it ought to be a good, good night. All yours, Benny.
On behalf of the Senior Citizens Board, we would like to invite you tomorrow to the senior center, between 2:30 and 4:30, to see the new flooring and all that's in, and talk to the board members, and suggest programs that you would like to see at the senior center. And there will be goodies to eat, so please come.
Thank you. I, too, want to express my appreciation to the people that came to the meeting last weekend, and the comments. When, when I was hiring people back before I was retired, I used to tell them every time, "The difference between the book and the real world is all the information you need to solve the problem is in the book. In the real world, you never have enough information." And you can tell from the comments of this group, we want more information than we get. We don't necessarily relish having to make these decisions, but, but that's our job, and, and we make them, and we make them as best we can, partially based on the feedback that we get, partially based on our own judgment. But we always, always, always welcome the input, and whether we disagree or not, we will try to remain civil at all times. In terms of the specific question that was asked about, are these plans posted to the website or around? We do the best that we can to publicize this stuff. I'm not here to sell newspapers, but we get it in the paper. So if you're not reading the newspaper, read the newspaper, at least online. Come to the city's website, we're spending an enormous amount of money on the city's website to make it more informative. So this has been a push that this commission and Chance has made ever since he's been in place, to better inform our community, not necessarily about plans for Broadway or the park plan, but our financial affairs, and all, and all of those things that you all might have questions about. Believe me, we don't want to do this stuff in a vacuum, we don't. We want the input, and again, we're just trying to make the best decisions that we can. So with that said, I hope, hope to see you all again on Wednesday night. And the process, we are somewhat limited in the exchanges that we can have by, by our own ordinances. So we can't necessarily get up and have a debate. So you'll have a chance to speak, and then at some point later, we'll have a chance to respond, but there won't be a lot of back and forth if we have specific questions, and then we may call on you again, we will call on staff to answer those questions. But it will be, as you would expect, fairly orderly, and, and I'll just warn you ahead of time, if it gets out of hand, I'll adjourn the meeting, which I have the power to do with the gavel. So bring, come, and bring your arguments, but bring your, bring your good manners, too. With that having said, we are adjourned to the Shawnee Airport Authority. And would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll move.
Moved by Commissioner Harrod. Second by Commissioner Bolt. Call a question. Motion carries seven zero. Is there any new business?
No new business.
We are adjourned to the Shawnee Municipal Authority. And would enter into a motion, would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll move.
Moved by Commissioner Gillum. Second by Commissioner Bolt. Call a question. Motion carries seven zero. Is there any new business?
No, sir.
We are adjourned, thank you for your attendance.